Jan Perry, Mr. CLA, give me a suggestion on what's the most efficient way to go through the calendar this -- the agenda this morning.
Sure, Madam Chair, I'll be operating with the CLA's office. I'd like to recommend that you accept on consent items number five and six. Five relates to TMDL implementation plan for Marina Del Rey Harbor toxics, and number six relates to the 20-year lease agreement with Crowded Lake Fish Camp.
Okay, now we don't have any cards on either of those items.
You do not.
Okay, great. All right, then that'll be -- that'll be the recommendation.
Okay. And that leaves you with items one through four. What we recommend, since one is kind of an extensive item, if you could jump into two, three, and four, which relate to the Office of Public Accountability implementing ordinances.
Two, three, and four, okay.
Okay.
All right.
So, item number two, City Attorney Report and Ordinance relative to the establishment of procedures for the removal of the Executive Director of the OPA, Fred Merkin with the City Attorney.
And Mr. Merkin, before you go, why don't we have Dr. Tom Williams come up and say his few words? You can stay there.
Sure.
Come on, why don't you do it now? And then you won't have to rush. You can see the timer, right? You know the timer running?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Are we on number one, or?
No, we're doing two.
Hmm? Two.
Two. You filled out a card for two.
Okay, yeah. Okay, the Office of Public Accountability. We're still trying to figure out whether we're going to have two people or one person in charge of it, or whether there's going to be a ratepayer's advocate or separate from the Executive Director. In the process, there has been some confusion as to how many minutes the public gets and when they get them, and such like that. It seems very strange that a committee doesn't know how to operate under the Brown Act. So, I'm quite concerned about that. There's also been some concern regarding as to the whole process, as to who's going to do it, when it's going to be done, and will it be done in a timely fashion? So, what we're trying to figure out is get it out in the open, because frankly, various people that I know have basically given up on it. They think that it's either going to be a city council or DWP organization, and that there won't be any transparency, because the committee's development has not been in a fair, transparent, and accessible manner.
Okay, thank you, Doctor. All right, Fred, Merkin, please.
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Chair. Frederick Merkin, outside counsel, assisting the city attorney. We have before you a report presenting an ordinance with regard to the removal of the Executive Director. The Executive Director would be the ratepayer advocate as well for the Office of Public Accountability. The Charter Amendment I provides for a removal procedure similar to the procedure that the Charter provides for the removal of the Chief of Police by the city council. That requires a two-thirds vote of the council to notice the hearing. It provides, in this case, the Executive Director with an opportunity to be heard, and then to remove requires, once again, a two-thirds vote of the city council. The Charter Amendment I also provided that the Executive Director can be removed only for the reasons set forth by ordinance. Before you is an ordinance that also provides for reasons, and these reasons come from the policies on discipline that the Personnel Department, acting through the Civil Service Commission, has established for the removal of civil service employees, with one difference. The policies on removal of civil servants provide that for supervisors, there's a higher standard of conduct required for supervisors. This measure, this ordinance, actually emphasizes that point to even a greater degree, because the Executive Director of the Office of Public Accountability would be a guardian of the public trust, would not act under supervision. This, the Executive Director will not be supervised by anyone in the city government. And thirdly, the Executive Director, him or herself, would be an appointing authority with the ability to appoint employees to the office and remove employees from that office. Putting all those considerations together, a very high standard of conduct would be required of the Executive Director. So, that's what we have before you as an ordinance, and it's before you for your consideration.
Okay, and I see Mr. Murray here. Did you want to speak?
Madam Chair, now unless you have some questions.
Yeah, actually, I do, if you wouldn't mind, and then I can just go through them and ask everybody at the same time, and whoever the appropriate person is to respond.
Good morning.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
And just identify yourself for the record.
John Murray, Chairman of the Office of Public Accountability Citizens Advisory Committee.
And thank you very much for taking the time to come today. So, the procedures that require two sets of two-thirds votes to initiate and finalize removal proceedings, explain for the record how this is both protective of the Executive Director and the entire process.
There's a balance, I think, that's struck. It's protective of the Executive Director, because he or she will know that he or she cannot be removed without a hearing. And so, you have before the council the ability to charge this individual with reason to be removed, give that person a public hearing, and then after the hearing, decide whether or not to remove. Now, there's a degree of protection here as well, in that this cannot be arbitrary. It can only be for the reasons stated in the charge, and those reasons have to come from the ordinance. And the ordinance, as we've mentioned, ties into the reasons that are established for removal and discipline of civil service employees, with the difference I mentioned, is a higher standard demanded. So, in this, the employee or the Executive Director has these protections of the hearing and only being removed for reasons, but the public is also protected, because the higher standards establishes that if this person has a feeling that it cannot be accepted at that level, that person can be removed. So, there's a balance, I think, struck by the ordinance before you.
So, the proposed ordinance calls for reasons for removal, and they're consistent with the Personnel Department's guide to disciplinary standards and policies. And just for people's own edification, give us some of the reasons that are contained in the guide, if you know them.
Well, is that right? Well, certainly, insubordination would be one. In this case, the individual is not under, acting under supervision of anyone, but I think discrimination, invidious discrimination against employees, dishonesty would be another basis for removal. I'd have to look at the guide itself, but there's a long catalog of standards of employment, and in addition to that, they actually set forth offenses. They articulate what the offenses are in that guide, and they have suggested levels of discipline for civil service employees associated with that.
So, and the provisions that are included in the ordinance relative to the suspension of the Executive Director have an explanation regarding the role of the council president as it pertains to suspension procedures. Why don't you go through that a little bit?
Yes, we're dealing with the possibility that you could have a problem with the Executive Director that requires investigation. Problem in the sense that there's, there are allegations, and it's not clear whether or not the Executive Director ought to be removed, and at a minimum, it requires investigation. So, it provides the ability of the council president to place in effect the Executive Director on administrative leave pending investigation. Now, we do provide that if possible, the council president would consult the mayor in advance of doing that, but there could be time exigencies such that this has to be done right away, in which case that consultation should occur afterwards. In any event, that order of suspension is to be referred immediately to the council for the council's consideration and its first opportunity.
To the council or to the council president?
No, the council, the order after having, after it's made by the council president is to refer to the full council for its consideration. And the council itself can ratify it, can modify it, or essentially nullify it.
Then the decision's already made, so then this would, in essence, be an appeal from the, if council president makes a decision.
Doesn't even require the appeal. It automatically would go to a council.
Okay.
And so, the council could, the council could disagree with the council president, and by majority votes, that you acted precipitously, or it's not required, we, now that we look at the situation, this suspension is not required, or it could agree and ratify.
And then what's the logic? Why would you want to be in a vacuum where one person makes the decision to put someone on administrative leave as opposed to going through a deliberative process? What's, what's, what's the, what's the logic behind that?
The logic is, you know, human behavior being the way it is, there could be circumstances where action needs to be taken immediately. You simply cannot tolerate having this person with this kind of cloud hanging over his or her head continue with function in that office, and you need a person in a position of authority to make that judgment, that at least pending investigation, he or she ought to be suspended.
Well, here's a suggestion, and I'll do this on the council floor, and I'm going to put a bookmark on this. To throw that onto one person without having, again, a deliberative process, I think, has a counterintuitive impact on the public's perception, on the efficacy of a process. And so, I, I'm not, we'll talk about it today, I'm not, and I want to talk to Jerry and see, take another look at that language, but I think we may want to, you know, we can, we have special meetings, we have emergency meetings, we have urgency, this is a special meeting today.
The council could be in recess.
Yeah, but we can, I'm going to talk to Jerry about that. I think that this is something we need to think about, because, you know, I read the LA Times yesterday, and they're questioning, you know, what we're doing here, and the rapidity with which, in which we're doing it, and the transparency, and those issues. I just don't want to do anything. This is a good thing. I'd like to roll it out as a good thing. I mean, I was kind of upset that, you know, it got diminished from its original intention in the first place. That's not your problem, that's the body's problem, because people had competing interests. But I don't want to make it, I don't want to diminish it any more than it is, or take the legs out from someone that we're hoping will be very independent, and that you'll have someone with such strong technical skills that they'll be able to stand alone and conduct themselves in a proper manner, and will have a full-fledged ratepayer advocate.
You'll notice, by the way, we suggest in, in the report, that this could be done differently. Instead, the council president could be the mayor. It would be the mayor who acted, for example.
I think it's not, although, it's not a single, it's just the issue of a single individual.
Yes.
Having the adjudicatory ability to put somebody on, on leave or on whatever, leave, I guess you'd call it, without having a, and then having the deliberative process afterwards, as opposed to having the deliberative process first, and then whatever decision comes. So, yeah, put, Mr. CLA, let's have further conversation before this goes to council with the chief legislative analyst, and then see if there's some language recommendations that I would like to make. Now, the budget procedures contained within the proposed ordinance, I just need to confirm that they're consistent with Charter Amendment Roman numeral one.
That's item number two. I feel it's strike that, number three.
We're rolling them all together.
Okay.
Yeah, that's okay, because I'm going to get to Mr. Murray in a minute, too.
Yeah, we have a different ordinance in front of you for the budget. Now, we've, the CIO's office, Mr. Kenny from the CIO's office approached us and asked for a tweak to that ordinance that's in front of you, to make it more consistent with regular city budgetary procedures. And so, before the meeting, I went to the city clerk and provided an amended version of that for your consideration, wherein the overall budget for OPA would be set just as we have it in front of you by ordinance. But if you're going to be doing budgetary actions in the detail themselves, setting forth how much for salary, how much for contractual accounts, and the like, instead of having those items by ordinance, have those done by the traditional budget resolution. And so, that is what is in front of you as a slightly different version of the original budgetary ordinance, and it would be more consistent with city budgetary procedures.
So, tell me the minimum budget floor, and give me the formula, and the current amount that the Department of Water and Power has to provide for the OPA.
Yeah, the Charter Amendment I provides for a floor of point, 0.025% of the department's annual revenues from the sale of water and electric energy for the previous fiscal year. And that is what is in front of you now as an ordinance. Now, Mr. Kenny will explain to you that what he's proposing by way of a budget resolution is different, because it's for the balance of the fiscal year, it's not for an entire fiscal year. But that's how the ordinance reads, and it complies with the floor. The ordinance also takes into account the possibility that audited financial figures later determine that the revenues were higher for Water and Power for the prior fiscal year. It automatically calls for an adjustment of the floor if required, to make sure that the, the budget of OPA corresponds with the Charter Amendment I formula.
So, the proposed ordinance allows for personnel authorities?
Yeah, it will allow for personnel authorities set by resolution.
Correct. Okay, now, this is a good segue into you, and then we're going to get to Mr. Murray, the role that the CIO plays with respect to the OPA budget.
That was item number three.
We're going to flow it up.
We were going to discuss it in there?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're taking them all together.
Oh, okay, fine.
So, just.
What we have done is submitted a report for the committee's consideration, consistent with the actions that Mr. Merkin has pointed out with the revised ordinance. We have submitted for your consideration an action to appropriate funds and provide employment authority for the Executive Director for the balance of the fiscal year. As the Executive Director is a brand-new city position, it's not included in any department personnel ordinance. Thus, we need employment authority from the, from the council to, in fact, hire that person once Mr. Murray's committee identifies the best candidate. Additionally, we need funding to support that department's efforts. We have made a series of assumptions regarding the estimated expenditures for the balance of the current fiscal year, and have submitted recommendations accordingly to provide salaries, expense, and startup costs associated with this office. Additionally, for your information, we have submitted a report to the Municipal Facilities Committee, who has approved the allocation of up to 1,800 square feet of office space for this office in the city's Figueroa Plaza facility. We are, in essence, with, what we have proposed here is necessary to proceed.
So, Mr. Murray.
Yes, Madam Chair.
How many interested applicants do you have?
We had a conference call last Friday, December the 2nd, which was the filing deadline, and as of that time, there were approximately 47 qualified candidates, and our, I say that because we've been informed by Heather Rentschler of Ralph Anderson, that only those resumes will be passed forward where she or and/or her personnel have determined that they meet the qualifications as established by the committee.
And what's your timeline, or what's your anticipated timeline for recommending the appointment?
You may recall, Madam Chair, that the last time I appeared here, a couple of weeks ago, I indicated that we intended to wrap up and move forward a name by mid-January, which I think Friday, the 13th, is actually about.
Oh, really?
Yeah, you know, depends on how you view that.
Okay.
But that's still our intent. And as I say, the filing deadline has ended. Our next meeting is this Thursday, the 8th. We will receive confidentially binders containing the roughly 47 or whatever the number of candidates' resumes will be. That'll be the first time the committee has actually seen who has applied. The committee will review those resumes and be prepared to meet then on the following week, on the 15th, at which point we will have gone through, and we will begin to prioritize or categorize those candidates, trying to whittle that down to a reasonable number of candidates that will be scheduled for first interviews. Out of that process, we will meet back-to-back meetings on the 19th and the 20th. We know the city's on furlough the week of the 26th, I think, or the 21st, 22nd.
Correct. The majority of city departments will be closed down.
And so, we understand, we've, we've got to work around that, but our intent is to whittle then, as I said, the large list down to a relatively short list, to schedule first interviews, then out of those first interviews, to whittle that down to just those few candidates who then would be scheduled for their second interview, in the event that any of those candidates may be out of the city. We now understand that chances are these people are currently gainfully employed, and so, you know, they'll need to work around their schedules, get that done, maybe make travel arrangements, we don't know, and we want to have all of that done, and then as a committee, be able to discuss who, what our thoughts were out of that very short list, and say, this is the person, and be able to move that name forward to the mayor and to the council by no later than January 13th.
All right, and then I have to say I'm impressed thus far, because your commission has operated in a manner where we're not hearing a lot of, you know, gossip, or not a lot of gossiping out there, outside of the, you know, committee process, and it seems like it has a lot of integrity, and it's functioning very well, and, and as you get deeper into this winnowing process, I hope that it continues, and that you encourage your commissioners to adhere to this high level of professionalism, because I think it's important in making sure that we're able to build the confidence that we're going to need on the other end when this is all done by the public.
Absolutely. And Madam Chair, I have to say that I really am extremely impressed and appreciative for the effort of all the committee members, and as well as the city staff, CLA, CIO, City Attorney, Personnel Department, we've been working with. I think you know that in the experience of most things, in most government, not just the city of L.A., to move as expeditiously as we have to this point is really quite extraordinary.
Yeah, and I appreciate it, even though I, I know that sometimes media outlets don't realize that, I think that you've been very, very deliberative and very substantive, and taking your responsibilities very, very, very seriously, and I'm very appreciative of that, and I'm sure all of my colleagues will be, too.
Thank you.
So, with that, we're going to move these on to council.
Ms. Perry, can I just make a statement, please?
Yeah.
Just to clarify, there's been a couple of, Bill Koenig, CIO's office, there've been a couple of comments as to why the CIO has been involved with and receiving the proposed appropriation of this activity. In an attempt to reduce the cost of the, of this operation, it's been suggested the CIO provide the administrative support that all departments currently have. Because this is a small operation at the present time, it would frankly not be very frugal to go ahead and establish administrative positions within this operation. Instead, it's been suggested the CIO provide payroll, personnel, budgeting, and accounting assistance to this operation. Traditionally, the CIO has provided this oper, this activity to developing city functions, and we are proposing that be continued. Now, specifically for the record, the CIO will only provide support, it will neither supervise nor oversee the work of the OPA, and it will simply respond to inquiries from the Executive Director and provide advice regarding city's procedures and processes. There is no chain of command whatsoever to be established.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you.
All right, so, Mr. CLA.
So, recommend approval for two, three, and four, with the caveat that two, we reconvene as staff and try to come up with an alternative way to handle the suspension component.
Yeah, we'll work with the city attorney, and we're going to have something for when we're on the floor.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much to all of you, and we'll see you in council.
You're welcome.
All right, so, now, we.
Number one.
Number one, and before we get into number one, I'm going to have Dr. Williams come up again. Dr. Williams, are you still here?
I'm still here.
He's, do you think he's gone for good? Okay.
For good.
All right.
He might come back.
Okay, if he, all right, come on, let's, let's do number one, then, so.
Number one. CIO, CLA report and PA Consulting report relative to independent third-party review of the Department of Water and Power's 2010 Integrated Resources Plan Study. We have PA Consulting here to provide the report. Madam Chair, our office in the CIO contracted with PA to conduct this review last spring. They have completed the review, and they're here to provide a presentation on DWP's IRP plan.
Great.
We also have DWP here in event you have any questions.
Okay. Do you need the lights off? Weird, because it was on when I got here. What do you think happened?
Oh, maybe it's, maybe it's out.
Maybe what?
Maybe that means it's turned on.
Okay, hold on. Weird, it was on. Yeah, it was, it was on when I got here.
We need to call ITA.
Hold on.
Hey. Do you want to flip?
Hang on, technical difficulty.
Absolutely.
Do you have, do you have ITs? Yeah, I was just careful.
Is it there? And then what about this?
You just click that one.
Okay, wait a minute, is this it? I hear something.
I hear, I hear a noise. Good.
It has to, what is it? Do you guys see it? Lights are on.
There it is, it's coming.
Okay. Do you want the lights?
Yeah, I think we, I think giving the lights would be good.
Yeah, turn off the light behind, yeah, thank, that's good, okay, that's perfect. She can still see, but it's a little bit darker. Okay.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Andrew Ray from PA Consulting, joined by my colleague Patrick Kubiak. So, we're going to talk about our analysis of LA DWP's IRP, and I think our first comment is it's a very good start, and a significant advancement in the type of analytical discipline for the Department of Water and Power. This IRP was published in December 2010, and is going to be part of a, the IRP is a process where the department will do major updates every two years and minor updates every year. So, this is an ongoing process that the department is engaged in, and is consistent with best practice in the utility industry. The purpose of the IRP is to provide a strategic roadmap for the utility's future electric generation and infrastructure, and to be consistent with current and future regulatory environments. Some of the strengths of the department's IRP is that it constitutes a major step forward on transparency. It gives a much more clear view of what the department's plans are, how it proceeds to combine with various types of regulation, and the way that the generation mix will look in the future. It is not an absolute commitment by the department to do exactly what is in the IRP. The IRP is a strategic framework that lays out sort of broad policy, general direction, and then within that general direction, they'll, they'll move based on what's happening in the market and prices at any given time, and that's also consistent with best practice in the industry. It includes significant input from the public through the LA DWP's IRP Public Outreach Program. There was a significant number of community meetings, the general manager, and the previous general manager, as well as the deputy general manager for Power, have all done extensive outreach efforts, which, again, is a big step forward from the past. Weaknesses of the IRP, it does not fully explain the impact of some strategic choices by describing the alternatives. So, where it lays out a path, it doesn't always describe the alternative paths that could have been taken, and why the path that they chose was the best path. It doesn't fully address the operational impacts of increasing amounts of intermittent capacity, and by that it means that as the, the number of renewable resources and the number of resources under contract increases, the department will have much more of a dynamic system where particularly renewable resources cycle on and cycle off, based on wind or solar load patterns. So, it's much more of a on-off, peaky type of system than it has been before, and the IRP doesn't go into the full detail of what that really means in terms of how the system will operate. It also favors solar resources beyond what can be justified by economics alone, and doesn't really go into the full policy reasons as to why it favors solar, doesn't talk about in full detail if it's the wishes of the city, or the wishes of economic policy to help create jobs. So, when you look at it, you're saying, hmm, this isn't the lowest-cost resource, so why, why is it in there? And that question is left a bit unanswered. It doesn't put forward a full plan to eliminate once-through cooling by 2029, or evaluate the costs of doing so, and, Madam Chair, as you're well aware, the department was successful in getting an extension of the deadline from 2020 to 2029, but in the IRP, it doesn't lay out the full plans for doing that and the full costs of doing that, and it is a major effort, and so, greater transparency in how the department plans to meet the 2029 deadline is something that we think would be a good improvement. The purpose of the IRP is to explain the department's objectives and strategy, and as a strategic document, it forms the basis for a more detailed tactical resource decision-making, and it's important to note that this is not intended as a tactical document, and it's not a, a compact to do exactly what's in there. It is a broad framework, and A detailed analysis of the department's recommended strategy showed that appropriate solutions have been considered in order to achieve the IRP goals. LA DWP's assumptions regarding load growth, commodity prices such as natural gas, fuel, nuclear, coal are all in line with those of other utilities and those that we are using in our own forecasts for other analysis. LA DWP's RPS plan is consistent with its recommended strategy and complies with almost all the current renewable policies and mirrors the RPS plans of other utilities. And the reason for the almost all is the fact that there is not a full OTC plan in place. LA DWP's goals are consistent with current and future regulatory constraints, and we think the department has done an admirable job of complying with a very difficult regulatory environment in California and in the nation. Reliability is a key component of the IRP to maintain a high level of electric power services through new capacity installations, the PRP program, and an upgrade of the transmission infrastructure. And we think the only constraints here are NERC and WCC regulations that impact system reliability. On economics, their goal of maintaining a double-A bond rating, debt service coverage level of at least 2.25 times, and electric rates at or lower than the IOUs in Southern California. Two things on this. One, it's for the council to decide with the department if those are the right goals, and also it may be very difficult to meet these goals without a rate increase or significant cost reductions in the future. The RPS-- meeting the RPS and the other regulatory requirements such as OTC is a very expensive proposition and will strain the department's financial resources and ability to do it. So the goal itself is something the department should consider, and then the success in achieving it may require additional rate actions. The IRP continues a longstanding policy of the department of continuing to own or control its resources, both on transmission and generation, and while this goal has proven to be effective in terms of reducing some market risk and reducing the risk of default from partners, it may not be the most economic solution, and the IRP doesn't fully address the economics of this particular strategy. In terms of the regulatory-driven things, that we believe the department is fully complying with all of the appropriate regulations and doing so in a way that we think is intelligent. And in many cases, the department is changing longstanding policies to move into more economic resources in their most recent budget. They've begun to contract for biogas, and they're planning on increasing that in the short term as a bridging strategy to keep rates lower while still meeting all of the regulatory requirements. So we think they're very focused on regulatory mandates and doing a good job of doing that. The IRP's recommended scenario, they studied multiple scenarios, in this case eight, and they recommend one, and we believe it to be a viable strategy. We don't believe it's the most economic solution to fulfill LA DWP's goals and regulatory constraints, but it is certainly viable. As I mentioned, eight different scenarios are included in the IRP, and they evaluated the impact of various RPS goals, renewable energy mixes, and coal reduction strategies, and then selected one. A sensitivity analysis on natural gas and greenhouse gas emissions was also performed for the recommended scenario as a base. The reason why we're saying it may not be the optimum one is it's not the lowest-cost solution to meet DWP's reliability goals and legislative mandates, and that's largely due to the retirement of Navaho in 2014, which is five years ahead of schedule, and switching Navaho out five years early has a significant impact on costs. So we believe the department should evaluate additional Navaho scenarios, and they should quantify the uncertainty around the marketability and price of Navaho in 2014. In addition, the IRP appears to favor solar resources beyond what can be justified by economics alone. And as I mentioned earlier, while biogas is now actually a viable strategy, in the IRP, they don't include biogas in their projected long-term generation mix. But again, the IRP is a strategic roadmap, not an absolute, and the fact that the department is now using biogas, we think, is an economically prudent thing. So in the next iteration of the IRP, we believe they should consider and evaluate the lowest-cost scenarios so that there could be a full discussion around that while ensuring grid reliability and policy compliance. The next page goes into all of the options that were evaluated, base case A through F and the recommended case. And again, we think the recommended case fully meets all of the regulatory mandates and the goals of system reliability, but could stand further scrutiny in terms of whether or not it is the least-cost solution. From all the information available to us, we do believe that their RPS plan is consistent with the Integrated Resource Plan recommended scenarios. And in terms of transmission and existing assets, the department uses its assets on the transmission line exceedingly efficiently in terms of building new resources, connecting resources, and so that strategy has been one area where I think they've achieved significant cost benefits by leveraging their existing transmission system wherever possible. The IRP and the RPS plan goals do call for steady investments, and that's largely to ramp up from 20% to 33%, and they do that largely in a way that we think is measured and achievable. Location, there is an emphasis on geographic diversity, which is prudent, proven more prudent by the windstorms that we recently experienced this week. They do keep projects in close proximity to reduce costs, but they also have balanced their geographic risk. There is an emphasis on technology diversity, although there's, as we mentioned, not a full examination of biomass and biogas, but we think that will be added in the next one based on discussions. And ownership, the power system, as I mentioned, is entrusted in owning projects with proven technology, and this is largely driven by reliability needs and culture of the department, not economics. There are two major risks that we think the IRP reveals, and that's the compliance strategy with the OTC policy by 2029 and the increasing share of natural gas that the department will have by-- it increases each year, and then by 2030, it's approximately 52% of their energy mix. The reason why we think the OTC thing is a risk is it's a complicated program, and having a clear plan with very explicit and robust cost and analytics, we think, is an important way of meeting the new deadline of 2029. So we would urge the department to prepare and publish that plan as soon as possible in an addendum to the IRP. The-- so again, in that way, the consequences, risks, and costs of doing that will be fully understood by all the parties. The other major risk that we see is the significant share of natural gas is, again, 52% by 2030. Natural gas currently has a supply glut, and prices are very, very, very low, and they are expected to stay low. But with 52% of the mix, and natural gas has proven to be a very volatile fuel with big price spikes, we believe that a plan for a robust hedging strategy and risk mitigation strategy would be a welcome addition to the IRP. In terms of the department's planning methodology, we believe that this effort constitutes an excellent base for moving forward and is quite similar to those that we-- of other utilities that we consider to be best in breed at this. They've developed several portfolios based on various metrics, RPS goals, greenhouse gas emissions, economics, different resource mixes. They evaluate and rank the resources based on lowest-cost, highest-value criteria. They fill in the net short in energy, which is the amount of energy that's needed either for mandated or demand, and then they meet the remaining resource deficiency with thermal generation, mostly using combined cycles. They rank the various portfolios based on their associated costs and identify the recommended scenario, and they perform sensitivity analysis. We do believe that they could increase the rigor and discipline in future IRPs. Many of the other leading practitioners run as many as 30 portfolios. The department ran eight. They use more complicated modeling and market analytics, and they get to a lower level of detail, but in fairness, that has evolved from the companies that have done this for a long period of time. They've sharpened their skills over time, and we think the department is on the right trajectory to do that. Some additional things that we think would improve the IRP is to more fully discuss the associated consequences and risks of complying with OTC. We also think the IRP should further quantify the effect of changes in coal prices and the impact of transmission costs on each of the scenarios they present. The impact of Navaho's contract abrogation and additional RPS portfolios should be evaluated more fully in further scenarios, and I realize there are market and confidentiality issues associated with some of that, but a more robust analysis, we think, would be a benefit. The preference for solar energy in the recommended strategy should be subject to more rigorous economic or policy analysis. Sometimes goals are not driven by economics, but if that's the case, then it should be explained more fully. We also think the department should more closely follow the projection of solar prices and update its recommended strategy accordingly. Some methodological improvements that we think would further increase transparency, a more robust discussion of the goals formation process and how these goals drove the portfolios that were analyzed, provide more details on the portfolio valuation process and the production cost model, so exactly how the portfolios are analyzed and modeled would be helpful. To expand the list of metrics for-- under which the portfolios are valued. Incorporate a study of the impact of various portfolios on transmission costs and include the results from the RES study and clarifications on how it led to different renewable portfolios considered. Describe with more details the impact of each scenario and renewable technologies on rate components, so more tightly link the impact of the strategies on rates. Add a discussion on methodology used to incorporate the IRP recommendations into the department's actual budget. It is difficult to see the linkage between the IRP and the department's financial plans. You can get there with a lot of discussion, but for the public, it would be quite difficult. And include the budgeted costs of all the items listed above in the action plan. Lastly, we talk about the department's response to the IRP, but since a representative from the department is here, I'd rather let them speak for themselves.
Yeah.
That's it.
Okay, great. One quick question, and let the record reflect that Councilman Cardenas has joined us. You said the conversation would be very difficult with the public, I think that's what you said? Tell me a little bit about that.
So the figures that are used in the IRP don't match tightly the actual department's financial plans. That's partly because the IRP is a strategic roadmap, not an actual tactical. It's also there are some different assumptions, planning assumptions, used in the IRP. The IRP is a longer-term, covers a much longer period of time. The department's financial plans usually are three- to five-year snapshots, and really only the next fiscal year is really robustly developed. So if you were to look at what the department is actually spending money on as we speak and next year, and then to try to tie that back to what they articulated in the IRP, as I said, we can get there because we have access to the department and all of their information, but if you were a member of the public and you were trying to make that linkage, it would be quite difficult to do.
Okay. Don't go away, there is one card, and then I'd like for us both to go through our questions. Let's bring Jim Stewart forward from the Sierra Club.
Can you stay here?
Yeah, you stay here. We're gonna go into questions next.
Right. So I'm Jim Stewart, representing Sierra Club, and we really appreciate the analysis that you guys have done, but we're disappointed that your summary here didn't go into the energy efficiency issues, that we are really, you know, pleased that Councilmember Perry has been standing up for the people who pay their bills, the ratepayers, and that energy efficiency creates huge benefits for ratepayers in that they have to pay less bills if they've got, you know, better, efficient appliances and insulation and all that sort of thing. And so we'd like you to analyze the energy efficiency components of this plan and show its benefits not only to the ratepayers, but also to the environment in terms of the fact that obviously if we have more efficient systems, we need less power, we need less of this natural gas and all that sort of thing. So that's what we'd like you to look at and show those benefits if that is possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And then DWP, who wants to summarize the response letter to the independent review from DWP, so we can have both sides of the equation before we get into the questions?
My name is Michael Webster, and I am responsible for the 2010 IRP, and we appreciate the audit very much because it gives us a roadmap to improve our IRP planning in the future. And the response letter that was written really addresses that, that we're appreciative of that, that there are areas that we do plan on incorporating, whether it's in the 2011 minor update or in the 2012 major update. We plan to do the best that we can to incorporate these suggestions moving forward, and as it's a process and we continue to improve, we're gonna find that we get closer and closer to the industry best practice.
That's it?
That's basically what-- I can go through each point if you'd like, if that would be helpful, is that what we said is that we will more clearly communicate how goals are formed and how the goals influence that recommended strategy, which was one of the recommendations that we just heard. We also will be modeling transmission much more effectively and trying to embed that into the IRP and show the right linkages, and we're trying to make some incremental improvements for the 2011 update, and we will do more in 2012 when we have the time to kind of reassess and do a complete new IRP. Risk assessment is also something that we are looking at in the 2011 update, looking at more scenarios for high and low prices of coal and natural gas, as well as emissions costs, CO2 and other emissions costs, so we plan to incorporate that into the future. Now, one of the recommendations was that the impact of divesting of Navaho was not clearly communicated. I don't think that came through in the presentation today. It sounds like it was clearly communicated, it was more of an economic-- the economics were not necessarily there, it was more policy-driven. We're gonna be discussing replacement of Navaho extensively, starting in 2012. As we roll out our outreach for the 2012 update, we want to really address coal replacement strategies. And-- And we will do more in 2012 when we have the time to kind of reassess and do a complete new IRP. Risk assessment is also something that we are looking at in the 2011 update, looking at more scenarios for high and low prices of coal and natural gas as well as emissions costs, CO2 and other emissions costs. So we plan to incorporate that into the future. Now, one of the recommendations was that the impact of divesting of Navaho was not clearly communicated. I don't think that came through in the presentation today. It sounds like it was clearly communicated and was more of an economic, the economics were not necessarily there, it was more policy-driven. We're going to be discussing replacement of Navaho extensively, starting in 2012. As we roll out our outreach for the 2012 update, we want to really address coal replacement strategies and really have much more dialogue on the strategies and why it may make some sense, not just, you know, economics aside, but it may make some sense really to align ourselves so that we can keep our system reliable. So we'll be having those discussions in March of next year. We also believe that we have evaluated the costs of high and low solar cases and that is reflected in the IRP. But we will continue to monitor solar prices as they move forward. And one of the things that we've done recently that was not part of the 2010 IRP, which I think is a very, very important improvement, is that we're not just looking at solar costs, we're looking at solar value. We're not just looking at wind costs, we're looking at wind value. So what we've done is we've taken our system over the last five years and modeled every hour of every day for five years on the value. And we've then outlined how wind may be coming at an off-peak and is less valuable to our system and thus to our customers. Where solar may be coming at peak hours and is more valuable. We've equalized that in our decision-making as we move forward with recommended procurements on both wind, solar, or even geothermal for that matter. So that's a recommendation we heard loud and clear and we've incorporated in our tactical plans. And you'll see more of that addressed in our IRPs in the future. And then lastly, there is more discussion in the update on the OTC. In 2010, the world was very, very uncertain as far as the timing and what the rules are going to be. And so what we had to do is put a placeholder and say, we understand things are going on and that it's coming and we were a little bit loose on it. But now that we know what the rules are, that the discussion in the 2011 update is much, much tighter as far as why we are staging the projects as we're staging those projects, whether it's an early compliance or a later compliance. So, and we think that those costs are going to be clearly communicated. And that was the details in the response letter that we provided.
Okay, great. We've been joined also by Mr. Krikorian. Just, I just have one quick question and then we'll go to Mr. Cardenas and Mr. Krikorian so we can make it downstairs on time. You know, aside from wind, solar, and hydro, what's the viability of using natural gas and biogas as this additional component to our mixture in achieving our goals?
Well, natural gas, that's what the IRP is, is quite a bit of an uplift in natural gas. And so from a risk management perspective, we're going to need to really look at how we can mitigate the volatile price of natural gas. There's many ways of doing that, from financial products to looking at additional resources. For example, we own wellheads in the Plandale region, which is a hedge on natural gas. We may look at other wellfield-type procurements in order to do that. But one of the best hedges is to not use any natural gas at all, which means really looking at our renewables program extensively. So what we may find in future IRPs, that our target is not just to barely hit the goals at a minimum level, but we may be doing additional renewables as a hedge to natural gas. And you asked specifically about solar?
Biogas.
Oh, biogas. And so biogas, we will incorporate in the 2011 update. Tactically, we have some discussions that are going on that came through in our SCAPRFP in January of this year and we're in negotiations on that. And then for the future, so beyond what we're doing today, we'll have to look at state rules and how they are going to apply to biogas. But we're hoping that in the future, what we see is more California development of biogas, that state law would allow pipeline-quality biogas. We would like to see much more local development in the future and we're hoping that we'll be able to address that in future IRPs.
Mr. Cardenas?
Sure. What exactly do you mean by pipeline-quality biogas?
This, pipeline-quality biogas is, biogas is cleaned up to a level that can be injected into the pipeline and transmitted to the power plant. So for, a good example of this would be our Hyperion, as they looked at to the future. If that was pipeline-quality and injected into the pipeline system, we could burn that either at Scattergood or at Haynes or at Valley, whichever units are on the system at that time. So you could burn it where your generators are.
And what would a producer of biogas do with non-pipeline-quality biogas?
Non-pipeline biogas right now in California has to be produce electricity at the site itself.
Okay.
So you're going to, they're going to use technologies that may be not as efficient because they're smaller, they're a little more isolated, so the heat rates are not going to be as good as maybe some of the modern technology power plants that are available today.
So it gets utilized, it just won't be transferred over to a facility?
That's right. It can be utilized, but you're also using the transmission system. You have transmission losses and congestion and things like that you have to manage.
And you mentioned that we now know the rules. It's my understanding that the rules are more defined today, but they're still changing.
They are changing. As we look forward to, as I said, that the OTC rules are known and so our compliance plan are based on those rulings. Now, on the biogas, those rules are in development and as those rules develop, we'll have to incorporate that into our thinking into the IRP.
Yeah, Councilman, there's a state assembly initiative to make it so biogas wouldn't count for the RPS standards. So there is a environmental constituency that doesn't believe that biogas is as clean as some of the other renewable sources. And so that discussion is ongoing. I think that's part of what the department is evaluating, what's the long-term viability of biogas and what's the risk, but in this case legislative risk.
Kind of like small hydro and large hydro?
A little bit.
Yeah. So who's behind that bill? Is it the Sierra Club?
I'm not sure.
The Sierra Club sponsoring that bill by that legislator?
Not really, no.
Okay. Thank you. The reason why I wanted to make sure that we understand that point for the public listening, we're local government, we have the largest Department of Water and Power in the country, but at the same time, we're constantly subjected to having to comply with state and federal requirements. That's just the way, you know, the ball rolls downhill. So when we do make a plan, as was mentioned by the consulting firm, to make projections 10 years out, they're honest projections based on the snapshot of what we can plan for today. But just looking at the component of legislation, whether it's at the federal or the state level, it could literally change, require us to change our model completely. And what's really sad is we might, we might have some components of our local model based on what the law is today or what the regulators require of us today or expecting of us today. Then all of a sudden, they could change that and we really have no say-so. Yet at the same time, we're actually the end producers, the end users. And that could actually not only change our model as to what, what energy sources we use, but it actually changes our model as to what it's costing us to produce that energy. So speaking of cost, what's the, what's the trend right now when it comes to renewable sources? Are the costs coming down dramatically? Have we seen spikes? Have we seen dramatic changes upward or downward lately?
Well, this is just a general trend and I don't want to quote numbers, but solar prices have been decreasing rapidly. I believe we're starting to see a leveling out, but, and future projections still show decreasing solar prices moving forward.
What were the main factors? As you conclude, what, on that description, don't forget to tell us what you can conclude are the main factors to that trend and what are likely the main factors to that trend continuing?
There's two factors. One, technology improvement as far as the ability to produce panels off the assembly line, the costs are decreasing. But we're also seeing there's a market component as well with a vast production and a world market that has declined a little bit. And that may go away at some point in time and that's why it's starting, we kind of see a leveling off in the future as far as solar pricing. Wind pricing, we actually see the opposite. Many of the projects that we had done early in our RPS development, 2005 and '06 and '07 and beyond, are much, much less expensive than what we're seeing today. And you're starting to see wind and solar are starting to reach parity with each other when you look at the valuations. Now, that's a very project-by-project type of analysis, but in generally, you're seeing that gap close dramatically in the future.
When you said a market, you meant an expanding market or a contracting market for that?
Really a supply and demand. So right now, I think that the supply is very, very high and the demand has dropped off some, so there's excess solar panels in the market today.
Yeah. The, some of the largest customers for solar panels were Spain, Italy, Germany, and some of the other European countries. And as a result of their economic crisis, their programs, particularly in Spain, have been cut back significantly. So production that was ramped up to meet very aggressive solar installations in Europe, those orders have been canceled or postponed. And so we agree that there is somewhat of a oversupply of solar equipment at this point in time that's having a favorable impact.
Well, when you talk about an oversupply, what comes to mind to me is maybe the outcome in the next six months or a year or what have you, you might have a lot of solar panel producers or people in the market who actually either collapse their business, get bought up by another business, and all of a sudden, unfortunately, that might actually drive up prices later on.
In the long run, yes.
Yeah, in the long run. You know, if you had, if you had a lot of competition and a lot of activity competing for those orders around the world or across the country, or even in the Los Angeles basin, what you have is, if you have companies that can't sustain that drought, all of a sudden, they're either gobbled up or they go away. At the end of that, you might see prices go up again because who do you have to go to? You don't have a bunch of producers. You don't have, you know, 10, 12 different name brands. You might have three to really contend with. Is there any analysis or fear of that?
Well, and we talked a little bit about geographic diversity, but also in the 2010 IRP and future IRPs, you see technology diversity. And part of the reason is because we can't predict the future, we wouldn't want to put our entire RPS basket on solar, recognizing that there are those risks. And then you get locked out of other technologies. So what we see is this diversified portfolio, which, where you have wind, geothermal, biogas, and solar as a portfolio. And that helps mitigate some of that technology risk.
And speaking of regions, geothermal, that wasn't mentioned much or highlighted much in the presentations. How's geothermal looking?
The geothermal was addressed in the 2010 IRP and we've updated it for the 2011 update as far as what we're seeing. And we do see a significant quantity of geothermal. Well, I should say, we are planning on a significant quantity of geothermal moving forward. Now tactically, there are some projects that have come in through our SCAPRFP that we could maybe start working on. So there are projects out there today that we can start developing. Some projects need some transmission to be built into those areas and those are sort of longer term and we're anticipating that transmission will be built and we will have access. And that's really why every year we have to tune up an update because if a transmission gets stalled and that geothermal may not become available, we'll have to look at other things moving forward.
And what does it look like when it comes to competitiveness on pricing with geothermal?
Well, that's an interesting question because we see a pretty wide range of geothermal prices right now. And what we want to do is sweep the most cost-effective that's tied to our transmission grid first. And I think geothermal, they have a lot of risk in developing geothermal and they sort of price that into their projects. And we've seen projects go under because of the cost structures involved, because the resource wasn't as viable as they thought it was when they entered into the project. So that will always be the future of geothermal because some of those unknowns related to the resource and resource management.
Thank you.
Mr. Krikorian?
This is a great opportunity when we look at the IRP to really think strategically and I always appreciate PA's work in giving independent third-party review. Couple of quick questions. I think Mr. Cardenas touched on most of what I wanted to ask about actually, but when you talked about the technological diversity, I want to touch on that a little bit because I was intrigued by this five-year analysis of value that you've done on renewables, the hour-by-hour review. I've never fully understood, I get that geotherm and biogas have, are baseload power, they're not intermittent, they have greater value because of that. Solar has greater value because it's predominantly a peak power source. I've never fully understood though, doesn't, isn't there added value to wind in its diversification effect itself? In other words, because of the curve of availability of wind tends to be opposite of the curve of the availability of solar, there's a smoothing and a shaping effect that you get from that that helps you to utilize more solar. Is that, is that not the case or is it just too intermittent to have that value?
You know, that is, that is very project-specific. So if there was a wind project and there was a solar project on the same transmission system and the wind project was exactly opposite of the solar and you're making maximum use of your transmission line, that would have value, absolutely. And you would, you would have to address that project and the value of that project because of the use of the transmission line. Now, if it's more of a diversified, then it's a little different because what's happening as a grid, not a transmission line, but as a grid as a whole, is what's happening is that as the winds coming in, you're offsetting some other cost. And what you may be doing is offsetting a natural gas cost. And that, or you may even be offsetting a coal cost, which is much, much lower today while we still have coal. And so those are the costs that we look back hour by hour by hours. On this day, on January 1st, at hour ending 2, what was our cost? So what was our cost all for those five years? So then you can start layering the wind profile against those cost structures and you layered the solar against those cost structures.
Right.
As a grid.
And I get, it's never obviously going to be exactly the opposite, but my think has always been, just like in the stock market, the more diversification of sources you have, the fewer of those peaks you're going to get. It's going to be a stabilizing factor.
That's right. And that's why also we want our wind diversified geographically as well.
Okay. Now, we talked a little bit about pipeline-quality biogas. There's a significant cost, I think, in cleaning it to the, get to pipeline quality, isn't there? And how does that compare to the overall, when you look at that whole sort of life cycle cost of biogas, receiving it, cleaning it, delivering it, how does that compare to other renewables that we're using?
Right. The prices that we're seeing, if you take pipeline-quality biogas and convert it into electricity, the cost today is between $75 and $80 a megawatt hour. $75 to $80 a megawatt hour is far below wind, which is running maybe $100 a megawatt hour without transmission. And then solar, which is $120, $130 a megawatt hour. So the cost is far, far less than what we're seeing today for other competitive renewables.
Okay, great. Now, we talked a little bit about legislative efforts to maybe modify the statutory RPS definition. There was discussion about that when I was in the legislature. I'm sure there will be discussion about that for years to come. I wouldn't bet the farm on it because anytime you touch the RPS definition, it's like a third rail. That being said, I just, I don't remember as I sit here. Do we have any latitude locally to define what we consider our renewables for purposes of meeting our RPS goals? Forget about the air quality goals for a moment, but just our RPS goals. Do we have any latitude in defining it differently than what is governed by state statutory law?
SB, there is some latitude, but not as much moving forward because SB 2 does require that all future projects be certified by the CEC. So the CEC has to be in a position to certify them and that's the key and so...
They're going to use the state definition for that?
That's right. Now, the state, it's very clear biogas is part of the state definition of a renewable resource.
Yeah. Okay. One of the recommendations, one of the PA recommendations indicated that DWP should in future IRP should quantify the effect of changes in coal and oil prices. I'm wondering what relevance oil prices have. We don't generate any electricity from burning oil, so what is the relevance of that?
We believe that as part of their economic analysis, they should be looking at all of the market fuels. And so absolutely, oil is much less relevant than it used to be, but in evaluating all of the scenarios, we believe they should look at all of the generation fuels. of the scenarios, we believe they should look at all of the generation fuels that are available to them.
In other words, we could if we chose to fuel our boilers with oil?
Yeah, actually, that's, no, we cannot. We cannot.
That's why I'm wondering why we care about the cost of oil.
Air quality management district rule and agreement, we will, we cannot use oil in our boilers.
So why do we care what the cost of oil is?
I think it's not a relevant finding.
Except to the extent that natural gas tracks oil prices.
Yeah, but that's diverged fairly significantly even, so I think that's something we could remove.
Okay. Finally, is there any consideration of utilizing RECs in meeting our RPS goals other than delivered power?
The SB 2 has three buckets, and the third bucket, which would be maximum quantity of 10% by 2020, the use of RECs. And so there are discussions that will be had as early as today related to making use of RECs for tuning up. So if there is a wind, if our wind is really poor in one season with poor hydro, and we find ourselves short, RECs may be a way of very quickly getting back into compliance to hit the targets. Or if it's a tremendously good wind year and hydro year and we find ourselves a little long, it may be a way to reduce the cost of the RPS so that we can sell those RECs to others and lower the cost. So there will be discussions related to that to comply with SB 2.
Great. Thank you.
This is a note-and-file item, so as much as it's not filed, without any objection, we will not file it. Now that we have a majority of committee members here, we, Mr. CLA, why don't you go through what we consented and make sure everybody's in agreement?
Sure. We initially consented items number five and six. Five relates to the TMDL implementation plan for the Marina Del Rey Harbor Toxic Pollution Plant, TMDL, and number six relates to a 20-year lease agreement with Crowe Lake Fish Camp for their recreational facility. Actually, the facility belongs to DWP.
You guys approve that?
I'm going to recuse myself on number five.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, otherwise?
Otherwise, recommend approved.
We'll move to approve that.
Okay.
Great.
And then aside from that, that leaves you items two, three, and four.
No, yeah. We don't have a quorum. Since he's recusing himself, I'm not, I'm not.
Okay, so just, just the communications to Chair for number five. Okay. And three votes on six. And then two, three, and four relate to the Office Public Accountability Implementing Ordinances. One, the removal of the Executive Director. The request from the Committee Chair was that staff work with City Attorney on the suspension component of that piece, that it perhaps include, in addition to the Council President, to suspend Executive Director, also include other individuals as well.
And my concern, just so the members know, is that I felt we should have a deliberative process prior to a suspension rather than afterwards. I thought that was a little...
Agreed. For example, that's a great point, because what if a neighborhood council writes a very nicely, well-written letter saying that they feel that the person has crossed the line and therefore the president should suspend them for a maximum 30 days? What's the standard of what reaches that point where the president should, in fact, decide whether or not he's going to invoke that?
Right. So the CLA will work on some ways with the CAO, and I'll make sure to share it with the committee members when it goes to council floor, because I really don't want to undermine this position. Okay.
Okay.
So...
And two and three related to the OPA budget, as well as the ordinance for it, as well as the CAO's working plan for the budget. So those items were recommended approved.
Any changes recommended on those? If not, I'm good with them.
No.
All right, so we move to approve on those, and then we've taken care of one. So this is a, thank you to PA and thanks to the department and the CAO. Thank you very much. If there are any items, this is end of the agenda, any items that people wish to speak on that are not on the agenda, this is the public comment, period. You can come forward and speak. Otherwise, we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much, everyone.